All right, good evening and welcome. It is Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at six o'clock, and we are here at the Kaiser Pacific Center for the Kaiser Planning Commission. First order of business, it's called order, which we did. Everybody's here, it's great. We have two absent, Commissioner Burson and Commissioner Saldivar. We'll note that for the record. And we'll move on to consideration of the minutes, going all the way back to June. So we're talking about like three months ago. I'm gonna turn everybody's microphone on. Thank you, I see you, I hear you, I'm getting in trouble with the sound guy. Hey Commissioner, make sure you turn your mic on.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Grantson, and a second by Commissioner Herb, to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously with two absent. That's wonderful. All right, welcome to a new youth committee liaison. I have to say it slow, because my speech impediment gets in the way. Angelica, welcome. Tell, uh, so let's see. I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions. Tell us what year you are in school, where you go to school, why you wanted to be on the planning commission, and where do you see yourself in twelve months?
Okay. I don't know if I'll keep track of all those questions. Hello, everyone, my name is Angelica Sarmiento, and I'm a senior at McNary High School. I wanted to join the planning committee, because I was a youth counselor, and I wanted to open myself up to another experience, and I wanted to know more about the city. In twelve months, I will most likely be a freshman at OSU.
So wait a minute, you were the youth liaison for the council last year?
Uh, Monprey?
No.
Oh, yes, I was, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about this.
Okay, actually, you interviewed very well last year, I remember that. You and Monprey interviewed together, I remember watching you at the volunteer recording. And you thought that this would be more exciting in the city council? Have you watched the planning commission? I mean Shane's really, he's riveting, right? The city attorney, you, this presentation, I'm telling you, you're never gonna have a better presentation in your life. I mean, this is, this is actually really fascinating stuff, and if you internalize this, you can fall asleep anytime you want. Welcome, we're glad to have you here, thank you so much for being here. You know, feel free to ask questions if you wanna ask questions and engage. I think Monprey did a great job last year, and look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you for having me.
All right, appearance of interest in citizens. Melissa, well, hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go a little off script. Melissa, this is your first meeting with us as, as the city recorder. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you. Yeah, welcome. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment at all?
Let me go check.
Okay, no worries. So while that's going on, we're gonna have the screen of Destiny go down behind us. Code of silence? Yeah. I think that's him telling me to be quiet. Yeah, that's fair. Nobody signed up? Great. We have people in the audience, any, any opportunity y'all wanna say anything? Nothing? Sure? Okay. I mean, this is gonna be really exciting, I don't know if y'all are ready for this. Like, I've been through this, my third, third time going through this presentation with the city attorney. For everybody on the dais here, I think it's their first, with, only with the exception of Council Dran. Yeah, I was gonna say, because I know I went, I think I did it twice with you on planning commission back in the day, and yeah. Cool, all right, well, without further ado, City Attorney Johnson, are you ready to go?
I am ready to go, and thank you to our IT person, Mr. Hopkins, who showed up just in time. So this gadget was working fine for several hours while I practiced it. I went and had a little bit bite to eat, and came back and worked fine until then, so. He managed to show up just in time. So who here, besides Matt, has had to sit through this before? No, no, no? Kyle? Yes. See how happy he is? And so, wait, so did anybody watch my famous video of this before? Yeah, I thought Jane had.
Twice.
So it's gonna be pretty similar, Jane, sorry.
Okay, no, it's not very new.
Matt says this is the best thing that he's ever watched, so I, I'm, I can hardly wait.
People watch Game of Thrones, I watch your video.
Yeah, there you go, there we go. So Shane thought this would be a great idea, I'm not sure why, but it, it kinda ties in with the issue that's for hearing tonight with regard to expanding the role of the planning commission with quasi judicial cases. So this, it, and I'm just gonna stay here, if that's okay with you guys, you can either turn around, do you want the lights off or not?
We actually have the slides.
Yeah. You want, you wanna leave the lights on, or can you folks see that okay? Okay? All right. There's only one slide where it gets kinda small, I think, so. I'm gonna go ahead and just get started. I'm, here's the overview, I'm gonna give you an overview of the statewide land use system, a very brief one. Gonna talk a lot about quasi judicial decisions, compare those to legislative decisions, talk about ex parte contacts and bias, conflict of interest, and a little example for the Area C Big Box Amendment, and a couple of things on public meetings and public records. So I'm gonna jump right into the goals and guidelines, so. And this is always hard for me to say, the more the years go by. It's supposed to be a statewide system, but have local control. Yeah, well, the local control part has diminished, as you've seen just in the last few years, actually started diminishing a lot more ten or fifteen years ago, but that was still the idea, basically. You can see the goals there, I'm sorry, this is one of the two slides that's a little small. The last four goals, sixteen through nineteen, apply only to coastal areas. All the rest apply to Kaiser in some unlimited ways, like agriculture and forest lands, but those are the basic goals, the main ones. And citizen involvement is number one, and that was number one for a reason. It was very important back when they put the goals together, so that's an important part of it. Let me go ahead and go to the next slide on, basically, the foundation. The goals and guidelines form the foundation of the land use system in Oregon. So your comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances, which are both legislative matters, are based on the goals and guidelines. The local decisions, and by that I mean the quasi judicial decisions, based on the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Once the comp plan and the zoning ordinances, that's the, for us, the KDC, the Kaiser Development Code, once those been acknowledged, which is sort of an automatic process usually with LCDC, Land Conservation Development Commission, then the plan and the local ordinance control almost all the time. There is an exception, we had one recently. If the state has some state mandated regulations, and you have a deadline by which to adopt something, and you don't adopt it, sometimes the state rules will apply it directly in a quasi judicial decision. We haven't had that situation, but that could occur. That did occur in the middle housing one, but you folks went through that and got that middle housing legislative work done, so that did not apply in that case. And by the way, I forgot to mention the beginning, stop me anytime for questions. Otherwise, I'll just rattle on, so. Quasi judicial decisions, legislative decisions. You see the two columns there, and I'll read these for the folks in the back, but, and I'm gonna go back and forth, if you will, between the two. So a decision involving one property, a small group of property, where there's an applicant, where somebody says, I own this property, or my neighbor and I own these properties, it's a small group or whatever, and they come in and pay a fee and file an application with Shane or Dina. You can add to that list of zone changes, variances, conditional use permits, partitions, subdivisions, those type of things, those are quasi judicial. When you folks, most of your work is legislative, and that's making amendments to the text, or recommendations, I say, to amend the text of the development code or the comp plan. Those are changes in policy, those are legislative decisions. For quasi judicial decisions, the hearing requirements are more stringent. They're less stringent for legislative decisions. One example that I'll talk about a bit here in a while, ex parte contacts. The prohibition on ex parte contacts, that is, somebody talking to you outside the hearing process only applies in quasi judicial decisions. In a legislative session, you, you, it's okay for folks to lobby you. If somebody says, hey, you know, I really don't like the middle housing amendment thing, that's fine, people can do that, people can do that to the council. Saying, I don't like that ordinance you're thinking about. But if it's actually an applicant that has submitted an application, and it's a quasi judicial matter, then the ex parte rule does apply, and you shouldn't have those kind of contacts. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit more. In a quasi judicial hearing, an applicant has the right to rebut the evidence. There is no applicant technically in a legislative one. We, you can have a petition, a person can ask to initiate a legislative one. As a matter of fact, years ago, Safeway came in and asked for and received a change in the amendment to allow a gas station at Safeway. Did they ever build it? No. And guess what? I still get blamed for that. I don't know why, but it's like we scared them off or something.
That's because we didn't wanna let snacks.
I, yeah, that must be it, I don't know. But in any event, that was, they spent a lot of time and money on that. They formally petitioned to initiate that change, but they were not an applicant. It was still a legislative matter. The criteria for quasi judicial matter is more detailed and objective than in a legislative decision. And in a quasi judicial decision, you have to end up with a decision one way that are denied, approved, approved with conditions. You can't like not decide, okay? In a legislative one, it hasn't happened very often, at all, that I can even think of an example, but the council, you folks, and ultimately the council could say, you know what? We spent a lot of time looking at this, but we're not going to adopt it. So you're not required to adopt something in a legislative matter. And the appeal, there is no appeal to Luba if a council decides not to adopt something. They basically decided not to change the policy, so, you know. Safeway, for example, if they decided not to do that, could not have appealed that decision if they didn't adopt a change. Let's see if I had any other notes on this.
And, Councilor, for the record, Luba, Land Use.
Land Use Board of Appeals, did I skip that acronym? Dang, yes. The Land Use Board of Appeals, yes, that is the body, the state board that decides local land use appeals. So let's talk about quasi judicial decisions. The applicant in a quasi judicial decision is entitled to an impartial decision maker. That's, folks, is you. If it's a quasi judicial case, and if it, if it is an applicant in a quasi judicial case, it doesn't matter if your decision is a final decision or a recommendation to the council. For example, the one you hear now is a new, not unamended Kaiser Station Plan. So if an area comes in for a new master plan in Area B, for example, that's a quasi judicial application, but your decision is just a recommendation to the council, but it doesn't matter, that's still quasi judicial. You're, they're entitled to an impartial decision maker. The council of the planning commission, you sit as judges, not legislators, and you must base the decision on the criteria. As I said earlier, the applicant has the burden to show that the application complies with the criteria, just like a court case, if the, the, the party, the applicant, that has the burden gets the benefit of having a rebuttal, because they're, because they have the burden, they get to go last. So, and that's set forth in state law, too. You have to base your decision, as I said, on the criteria. You don't base it on whether, gee, I think this is good, or I think this is bad. You have to look at the criteria, and they have to meet all of the criteria. If you don't meet one of the cri- we might have some weird thing, I don't think we do anymore, where you have to meet two out of three or something, but typically it'll state you have to meet all of the criteria. And one of the things I like to say about this is, is to correct laypeople's views sometimes of what judges do. For the most part, a judge may have a seat of the pants kind of quote judgment call, but judges don't make gut decisions typically. They base it on what you learn in law school, which is, you find out what the issue is, the legal issue. You determine what the facts are, to the best your ability. If there's conflicting facts, you sort that out. But once you have the facts that you believe are true, and you know what the law is, you apply the law to those set of facts and reach a conclusion. You don't go on your gut, for, you know, if, if, if you're doing it right. One of the things that I used to say to the counselors years and years ago, back when we had a lot, a lot of land use cases, I mean, a lot, when Kaiser was growing. We have so few now that is amazing compared to the old days. And when I say the old days, I mean the early nineties. As I said, you know, if you hear enough of these cases, eventually you're gonna find a case where you wanna deny it, but you have to grant it, or you want to grant it, but you have to deny it, because that's based on your objective view, what the criteria are. So, and then, here's the geeky part that I know Matt will love. So the idea of an impartial decision maker in these kind of cases, actually, by at least a year or two, predates the land use process in the early seventies. There was a case in Washington County called Fasano versus Washington County, and in the old days, these cases just went to the circuit court. There was no Luba, there was no LCDC. And so if somebody says, I don't like this decision, they had to actually file a lawsuit in court. In that case, Mr. Fasano sued Washington County, saying he didn't think he got a fair shake. He was opposing Mobile Home Park and unincorporated Washington, a proposal for one that would, would have been a zone change. And what the court said there is in those kind of cases, that the parties at the hearing are entitled to an opportunity to be heard, an opportunity to present and rebut evidence to a tribunal, that's you guys, which is impartial in the matter, i.e. having no prehearing or ex parte contacts concerning the question, and to a record made and adequate findings. So, again, I don't wanna make too big a deal of this. I mean, it is still pretty informal, it's not like a court case, but it is a little different than when you're saying, well, should we adopt this amendment to the KDC or not? That's a lot more discretionary, and, and you don't have people's, shall we say, individual property at stake, either the applicant or the people that live next to the applicant, right? So, oh, I guess I didn't click one more time, we like to have time limits on the speakers. I get a little more picky about this than I do in a regular council meeting about the time limits and extending those, if you're in a quasi judicial case, so people can't gripe. Let's talk, any questions on that part? Generally about quasi judicial.
So, to expand, one of the things you talked about on bullet number three, it says, decision must be based on compliance with criteria. That compliance with criteria could be established through conditions, correct?
Could be comply within the conditions, right. So if you have a condition that says, well, I don't see how you can comply, and one of you says, or staff says, well, if you impose this condition, then they would comply. And yes, if it can be imposed by a, a condition, then compliance can be reached in that criteria. And that you off, that is often the case. That's the main reason for most of the conditions.
Thank you for letting me clarify.
Mm-hmm. Anything else on quasi judicial stuff? All right, I think I have touched base on this a little bit more later, but let's go to ex parte contacts. So in court, and my joke is, I really didn't do the Perry Mason thing very much, but occasionally, in the old days, I went to court, you really can't go talk to the judge without the other guy. It's bad form, it's actually considered a bar violation, okay? Because you're getting your word into the judge, and, and that's why if you run into the judge in the elevator, you just talk about the weather. So you can't talk about your case when the other side is not there. That's considered an ex parte contact. In a quasi judicial setting, because they're entitled to an impartial tribunal, that needs to be avoided. So here's the definition, any communication with you folks as a decision maker regarding the application outside of the public hearing process, thus may include verbal or written communications, site visits, or newspaper articles. And let me double check my notes before I get too far. So, again, this only applies to quasi judicial settings, and let's talk about those communications. If you get an email, when we have a case either coming up or pending that's a quasi judicial one, you should forward that to the city recorder and Shane in my office, and should not respond at all, except to tell the sender, please forward any future things to the city recorder, the planning department, or the city attorney, or something like that. You don't want to get any, any kind of back and forth. Since, and that'll be made part of the packet, and it's not a problem, okay? Same thing with a newspaper article. I, I frankly, counselors hated me to tell them this, but is, I told them not to read the paper during that if they had some big deal. But, you know, they couldn't avoid that, so. You can always, though, if you have to, you make the newspaper article, as long as it's before the hearing is closed, part of the record. It's those verbal communications that's the problem. And so if you have a case before you are coming up, or that you had the hearing, it's continued, or whatever, you, you know, anytime before the vote, you need to just tell somebody, stop, don't talk to me about this. If you talk to me about this, I could get in trouble, and the decision can be invalidated. Just submit your stuff in writing, and we'll, we'll all hear the same thing. And, you know, and so that's what I've kind of urged people to do. The issue of why it's a problem, I think I kind of touched that at the beginning, it basically deprives the party who isn't talking to you on the side the right to rebut that information, because they're not hearing the same thing, right? So you wanna avoid the ex parte contact, because the other side doesn't know what you're getting told. It's contrary to the requirement that you're impartial, because you can't be impartial if you're getting information that other people can't rebut. And it kind of erodes the public confidence in the hearing process. It kinda, and, and although it's not intended this way, either by the person talking to you, or certainly you, there's a kind of a signal that somehow there's a backroom deal going on. So it's just something to be avoided, and it can lead to a claim of bias, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Remember, again, for the fourth time probably, only quasi judicial decisions, and it only applies to contacts made with you, not city staff. So the applicant or opponents can talk to me, or talk to Shane, but they can't talk to you, and they certainly shouldn't talk to council, because the case might go to council. But they can talk to staff. One thing people don't often know is it applies to you folks, too. You can't talk to each other. So outside the hearing process, which would be real easy to fall into, you can't talk about the case to each other. That's considered an ex parte contact. Years ago, and it was some of the many stages of the original Kaiser Station work, which, multiple, multiple hearings, an attorney for an opponent was there, the, the developer was putting on a big dog and pony show with easels and maps and everything like that, and the council took a break. You know, it was a long meeting. They took a break, and everybody got out and wandered around, looked at all the easels and pretty pictures, and site plans, and all that stuff, and chatted and everything, and then they reconvened the meeting, and the attorney jumped up and said, well, you've all had ex parte contacts during the res- I said, ah, yeah, you're, you're right. And so we, we had to cure it, which I'm gonna get into in a minute, but it was awkward at best, it didn't turn into a big deal. I think he was just trying to make a show, frankly, but. Remember, it applies to contacts made after an application is filed, but if you know an application is coming in, you should probably avoid that process. I mean, that ex parte contact. Let's see, I think I have one more comment on this. Oh, maybe two. Site visit. Technically not an ex parte contact if you go to visit the site. You know, I mean, if you go on purpose to visit the site, and you look, and you don't talk to anybody, but if you gain information from that visit, then you should disclose that, because you basically are gaining information outside the hearing. So if you go and, you know, I couldn't resist it, I went and looked at the site, I remember, the site's always flooded. I think there's serious drainage problems. Well, you need to disclose that information. I've been there, there's terrible traffic problems here. Well, you need to disclose that, too, because that's the information you gained outside the hearing process. So disclosing it will cure that. The fact, what do you do, like I said, in terms of curing it? The fact that such contact occurred must be disclosed at the beginning of the public hearing, and here's another little tidbit that's not in the slides, is if the hearing is continued, it has to do it at every hearing. So it's the next hearing, too, or a third one, which doesn't happen here much, but happens at council sometimes. That, and, and why? Because one of the persons who was at that second meeting wasn't at the first meeting and didn't hear that disclosure, and wasn't able to rebut that. So that's, that the idea behind curing that. So both the nature of the contact, as well as the information obtained, must be undisclosed. And this is one of my favorite parts, because I locked, need, I get, I get to talk about unnamed counselors. None of them involve Kyle, by the way, so. As a matter of fact, none of them involve the current council. But in the old days, I had counselors that couldn't quite get this concept down, and they would say, oh, yeah, I talked to my neighbor. What did he say? Oh, I don't remember, it wasn't anything important. And it's like, well, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't cut it. I mean, that just, that is awkward, and I've had depressed counselors before. I mean, that just, that is awkward, and I've had depressed counselors before. As a matter of fact, that example I used before, I had each counselor go through, because they had just finished talking to him in the middle of that meeting, "Who did you talk to, and what did they say?" And, and that's the way you disclose that. Because this is such a hassle, that's the main reason to try to avoid it. So if you don't have that verbal ex parte contact, and you have, don't have to try to cure it, which is, you know, awkward at best. Oh, the other one I loved that I wrote down here is, I had a counselor tell me once, "Oh, no, it wasn't really an ex parte contact, because I just listened." No, that's, that's still an ex parte contact. It doesn't matter that you didn't talk. So, that, and let's see, I have one more slide maybe. Remember, this is to allow the party to rebut the information. If you don't know the contents of that, then they can't rebut it. So you need to be able, have the other party be able to make a counter argument. They can't make a counter argument if they don't know what was said. The bottom line, let's just try to avoid them altogether. Back to the thing I said several minutes back, "Stop, don't talk to me." That's really the best way to, to try to avoid that. I strongly advise you avoiding that, even though theoretically you can cure them. Again, I would just say, you know, you could tell them, "It, it'll get me in trouble, it would cause the city trouble, it could invalidate the decision, it could cost the city a lot of money." A brief story from my days, I did some work for Sherwood for a couple of years. Actually, I'm going to talk about that when I get to the bias one, never mind. It's the same kind of story, but it's an extension of the ex parte one, so I'm going to wait on that part. Any questions on ex parte contacts, before I jump to bias?
Well, I think I just want to make an observation. I think that over the course of my experience with quasi judicial, most of the times when a party can't beat them on the applicable substantive criteria, they beat them on process. And if there's a failure in process, particularly as it relates to ex parte communication, or notices and things like that, that's where a lot of times things can go sideways. And so it's, I think to punctuate and, and really make clear how important what this particular piece is, as we potentially look at quasi judicial processes, is super, super important, because if they can't get you on the substance, they'll get you on the process.
Right. And that's, and that's very true. Let's see, so I'm going to skip to the next one, which I think is bias. Bias is a bit different, actually, it's a lot different. Prejudice or prejudgment of the fact to such a degree that a decision maker, again, that's you folks, an individual decision maker, is incapable of rendering an objective decision on the merits. This is a personal interest or prejudgment. This thing is obviously, you can tell right off the bat, it's a lot more subjective than ex parte contact. Ex parte contact, yeah, somebody talk to me outside the hearing, okay. Bias, at, at least the beginning, it's up to you decide if you have a real personal interest in it. It's not a conflict of interest, which I'll say later, it wasn't an ex parte contact, arguably, then you need to decide if you have that situation. I've had it come up very rarely, where someone says, "You know, I just don't think I could make an objective decision." Or, somebody argues that they can't. So the case in Sherwood, and that was at the planning commissioner level, there was somebody there that was really against a gas station. And they didn't really hide it very well. They had ex parte contacts about it, and they spoke about it on and off the record. And it was, and the applicant was denied, and appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. And I got to do the whole Luba number, which is kind of fun, I don't get to do that very often. We were able to win that case, but it was, but the, the Land Use Board of Appeals wrote it is a very close case. And that commissioner caused a lot of, lot of problem. So, and, and again, getting back to it, sometimes the ex parte contact can be kind of a signal of bias, and that's another reason to try to avoid it. And I don't know all the details, but it, a case in Depot Bay was, was the poster child for that, and the planning commissioner just obviously was extremely biased, and didn't really make any bones about it, did not recuse themselves, and, you know, the Land Use Board of Appeals remanded the case. The result of bias is, you have to recuse yourself from the decision and any discussion, you know, at the beginning. And there's a limited exception if you've got a quorum problem, basically, that's extremely narrow. Interesting part, another thing not on the slide, a little tidbit, if the Land Use Board of Appeals determines that bias is actually shown, it doesn't matter what the vote is. So you can have a seven to zero vote, and you have one commissioner that's biased, and Luba says, "No, it's remanded, there's bias here." And I think the theory is kind of the bad apple theory. So you got one commissioner, the theory is, "Hey, maybe that commissioner had some influence, maybe he's a leader on the commission," or whatever. That bias throws out the whole thing. So you can see, you really want to avoid that if you can. Again, very rare, but if you have that situation, you may want to decide to excuse yourself, or recuse yourself is the fancy word for it. Avoiding bias, one of the ones, of course, is voicing your opinion prior to testimony. And I'm going to, and I think I'm going to jump in here with my little notes before I go to the next slide. This really is more than just bias. This is the part, the sage advice I'm about to give you, really applies, bias or not, or even the show, it's just a way to handle yourself in a hearing. And that is, please avoid making proclamations or broad statements before the hearing is closed. You don't want to do it before the hearing, privately, before the hearing, here, at the hearing, until the hearing is totally closed. You don't want to make statements like, one of my favorites, "Oh, I'm just going to vote no on this." Yeah, that's not something you want to say, you know, before the hearing started or halfway through the hearing. Or, "I think there's a terrible problem with traffic." What you can say, and what I advise folks to do, is put your statements in the form of a question, it's kind of like Jeopardy, right? You say, "Hey, you know, I had a question about the traffic here, or I have a concern about the drainage, can you explain to me how the drainage would work?" Rather than making proclamations that, that might, even if not true, kind of show bias. And even if it's not definition bias, you don't want to have the community think, "This guy's already made up his mind," right? So that, and that's the reason to kind of avoid that if you can. Statements, of course, are fine after the record is closed. One of the things I didn't write notes on, but I remember Mayor Christopher always asked me about this, we haven't had the situation come up for a while, council, since we have so few hearings. But typically, the best thing to do is not get into any serious statements of position until not only the hearing is, is closed, but a motion is on the floor, okay? And Matt knows kind of about this. So the hearing closes, but there's not a motion on the floor, there's still questions. And the reason you leave that hearing open and ask questions at the end is so you can call participants back up to the table if you have questions. Once you close the hearing, it's kind of awkward to do that. You can ask staff questions after the hearing is closed. But again, you need to keep your statements fairly neutral, until you get to the point of a motion. And then you can say, "Hey, I'm going to vote no on this, and here's why." And you lay out your reasons and compare them to the criteria that you need to look at. So, again, and then the ex parte contacts, which can be, you know, lead to a challenge of bias. And again, this is more the appearance of it, not necessarily real bias, but just the appearance of it could cause problems. Let's see. And anything else on bias, before I switch to conflicts of interest? Questions on that? No? Okay. Conflicts of interest, I was just talking to Matt before the meeting about this. Couple of definitions. Actual conflict of interest, any action, decision, or recommendation, the effect of which would be to the private pecuniary benefit or detriment of the commissioner, et cetera. Potential conflicts of interest, any action, decision, or recommendation, the effect of which could be to the private pecuniary benefit or detriment of the commissioner, relative, et cetera. So, two words there. The actual says would be, definitely would be to your benefit or detriment, or your relatives. Potential, could be, might not be, but might. And pecuniary. Pecuniary means money. So the fact that you're really interested in something personally, but it wouldn't make a dime's worth of difference to you one way or the other, is not a conflict of interest. And people sometimes use the broad definition of conflict of interest, which I'll talk about a little bit more here in a slide or two. But for, this is chapter 244 of the Oregon Revised Statutes, this is what Mr. Burson does. I talked to him earlier today. I didn't realize until I talked to him, he wasn't going to be here. I told him I was really glad, so I wouldn't embarrass myself in front of the executive director of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. But, you know, what he said is, you know, they have these all the time, a lot of people don't understand them. But I'm going to go through a few, few things on this. One of the things, before I forget my notes on this, again, a personal interest is not pecuniary. For those of you that remember Counselor Walsh, Matt, do you remember the fluoride days? So Counselor Walsh was really anti-fluoride. And we had several heated meetings with dentists appearing, and all sorts of stuff, about fluoride. He was passionate about it, didn't like the idea of fluoride in the water. But, that was not a pecuniary interest. It was a personal interest, it didn't matter to him one way or the other, dollar wise. So that would not be a conflict of interest. Another example, or I should say point, this, unlike ex parte contacts, applies to both legislative and quasi judicial. So all your decisions, the conflict of interest rule applies to, okay? Not just quasi judicial.
So, I just want to, but in, in the event that an actual, or even a potential conflict of interest exists, a commissioner could say, "You know what? I don't need to be here, I can't be, I can't make a, I can't..." Now, that doesn't preclude them from sitting in the hearing, they just cannot participate, correct?
Right, and I will get to that in a slide or two, but basically Matt is correct. So you can make a decision to sit out, in, in a potential one, you don't have to.
Right.
But let's see if that is next. Now, this is the weird rule I'm going to skip through real quick. There's an exception to the conflict of interest rule with regard to a class of industry, occupation, or other group, it's actually narrower than it reads, and only the OGEC, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, can rule on that. And then membership on the board, you have a nonprofit, like the Chamber or Rotary, because they're a nonprofit, something that would benefit an organization, and you're a member, that is not considered a conflict of interest. Now, by the way, you can choose to avoid the appearance to say, "You know, it's not a technical conflict of interest, but I don't want any mistake about it, so I'm not going to be involved." You can choose to abstain if you want to do, but you're not required to under state law. Difference, actual and potential, and this is, again, the would could part is, is definite. One of the examples in one of the old OGEC manuals was, you're applying for your own zone change for your own property. That is obviously an actual conflict of interest. The example they used is your neighbor's applying, so it might kind of affect your property. To me, frankly, that was kind of an actual, but the manual said that technically it's only a potential. In my, in my thought on that one is, I would say, you know, this may be a potential or actual, I'm going to recuse myself anyway. But something that's really far afield, that might, you know, you have some business that, that doesn't, that whatever you're doing may somehow be indirectly connected with it, that would be a potential conflict of interest if it's a pecuniary gain. But here actually is what you do, which getting back to Matt's point, if it's an actual conflict, you must announce, again, the nature of the conflict, not just say, "I have a conflict, I have a conflict because of XYZ. I have a business, I have a relative that has this business." And say, "It's an actual conflict, I'm going to recuse myself and not discuss, debate, or vote on this." Now, the council and the council rules say that the counselors are supposed to remove themselves from that. We haven't done that in a while, but we used to in the old days. That's up to you folks if you want to actually remove yourself from the room, it's not required under state law. On a potential one, same thing, you have to talk about the nature of it, not just, "I have a conflict, but I have a conflict because of XYZ." But then you can say, "I am, I will, because it's potential, I will debate and vote on the issue and discuss it." You can choose not to. You can say, you know, "It's a potential, and so I could debate and vote, but under the circumstances, I'm, I've decided to abstain." And my thought on that, by the way, is, and it's not written down anyway, it's just Johnson on conflict of interest, but if you're going to decide in a potential conflict of interest that you're not going to vote, don't debate. That's halfway. I mean, if you're going to say, "I'm not going to be involved," then you should not be involved, not just, "I'm going to debate, but not vote." Again, that's in a potential conflict, and that would be my thought on that part. Oz and Anne's about conflict of interest, one of the small slides. I won't read all that small stuff, but basically, almost every relative you can think of, I think there's some exceptions there, is defined as a relative. Also, they changed it a while back, anybody you have a legal support obligation to is considered a relative. And then any individuals in which are connected with your employment, that would maybe indirectly benefit from that, that you're kind of connected to, are also considered relatives. Business means any kind of business for profit. If you're an employee, director, officer, owner, or agent, or if you, a relative owns stock in a private business, that the stock's worth a thousand dollars, or you own a hundred thousand dollars in stock or equity in a publicly held business, or if the business is listed in your statement of economic interest, which you have to file with the state, then that's considered a business for, for this statute. And actual and potential conflicts, again, only apply to pecuniary interests. Any other questions on conflict of interest?
So is that, is that a, that is not a point in time issue, right? So for example, if through, throughout the process, a conflict of interest emerges, so for example, my wife gets a job with somebody that's an applicant, I immediately have to declare a conflict of interest, right?
Correct.
It's not a point in time issue.
Right. I mean, so it, I mean, it is a point in time issue to the degree that if they got the job after you already made the decision, then it's not a conflict.
That's right.
But partway through, your example, you know, rings true. It's like, well, you, you didn't know she was going to get it. Now, frankly, if you thought she was going to get the job, you know, you might want to recuse yourself, but
Sure.
Then you might not want to disclose that either, because that would be awkward.
Right.
You know, if somebody's applying for a job, you might want to not talk about that. But yeah, it's a point in time kind of thing. So you're exactly right, Matt, if in that hypothetical, you'd want to declare as soon as your wife got that job, in that kind of hypothetical. Anything else on conflicts? Okay, I am going to skip to the big box amendment, and this is going to be real brief. How many of you remember back before Bonaventure and the apartments were there over in Chumala? Okay. How many remember the big hullabaloo about a, maybe a Walmart possibly coming into town? Some of you remember that? Yeah. I don't know, were you involved that much back then? Yeah. So yours truly was in the thick of that whole mess. It was kind of fun for a while, and then it got unfun. So, at the time, and I'm just using this as an example here for, for a pop quiz, that was a mixed-use zone amendment. At the time, that was all mixed-use, and they didn't want big box stores on the original Kaiser Station plan. And it wouldn't allow any store up more than 10,000 square feet. The developer came in and asked for a legislative amendment with limitations to allow up to 80,000 square feet, if provided some mixed use elsewhere on the site, and all sorts of other requirements. That changed, as I said, the size of the stores in it. We couldn't talk about stores, we had people saying, "We want you to outlaw Walmart, everything else is okay." "Yeah, we can't do that, sorry, we're, we're, that's not something we have the ability to do." Of course, it required compliance with the plan and the statewide goals as a legislative amendment. And the opponents really based a lot of their argument on transportation, in terms of traffic and traffic counts and all of that stuff, who's gotten really wonky on, on traffic impact analysis. Here's the hypothetical question, if it was appealed, it's, you know, it's whether there was evidence in the record that it complied with all the applicable plan and goal provisions, in this case with the traffic one. So if the council went through all this and then decided not to adopt something, could the developer appeal? Come on, come on, anybody? Bueller? Anybody? No, and why? Because it's legislative. So just like the Safeway example, if the council decided not to make that text change for Safeway, or decided not to make, which they did, and I'll tell you about in a minute, the Area C amendment, and said, "Well, we're just not going to adopt anything," the developer could not appeal, because that's a policy question, a legislative question. It's like saying to the legislature, "Hey, I'm going to appeal that you didn't, you know, pass the bill I wanted." So that could not be appealed. By the way, there was a- By the way, there was an appeal on that case that was successful. It was a very weird decision out of the Land Use Board of Appeals. It came back, and I can't remember if it totally died, or we adopted something else that wasn't appealed, but it didn't satisfy the developer, and they went away, and it ended up sitting there for years more again until Bonaventure and the apartments came in. And at that time, when they came in, that was not appealed. In fact, I mean, we got some pushback, but it was relatively minimal. Any questions on that? Going to skip to public meetings so we can get on with the rest of tonight's hearing. Any group of two people, doesn't have to be three, by the way, two people that's kind of formally or even kind of informally a subgroup, a committee, or any type of body that is, has authority to make a decision or make a recommendation, must hold their meetings open and notice to the public. So I caution the mayor not to make kind of these, oh, I'm going to have two counselors do this. That's technically a public body, they'd have to public meet. You can have two counselors that don't meet, kind of give their opinion, but if you're going to say, we want you two to go meet, and you do that formally or sort of informally on the dais, and now, now you have a public body. So, you know, Madam Mayor, please don't do that, because now we have another meeting to handle. One of the questions, and I like to talk about this because it comes up a lot, emails. So emails, I'm going to talk about emails in the text, in the context of public records in a moment, but now I'm talking about public meetings. So if you do an email as you'll, about any city business, that's a public record, and I'll talk about that. But if you folks start to do an email between each other, and there's four of you on the string, or more, and you start talking even informally about city business, and frankly, in my opinion, even something that's not before the planning commission, I think is dangerous, that technically could be what's called a serial meeting. So for example, I don't usually do that with you folks, but I spend a lot of time talking to counselors, and Kyle can tell you this, is, is sometimes I'll say, well, you know, tell Mr. Brown, I said, you know, I need to get a email out to the council, I'll send the council, copy some staff members, and say, hey, here's some information on this. And at the bottom, I will say, if you have any questions, please let me know, do not reply all. And, you know, they don't like that a lot, I think, sometimes, and frankly, as a practical matter, stifling to good discussion, but guess what? If you don't do that, you have at least the accusation of a serial meeting. Because, and I've had to shut down those conversations with counselors sometimes because they just accidentally get into, well, yeah, but what about this? And now all of a sudden, you're having this discussion. Well, the next, the, the second bullet there said, it's an open question, and though virtually all emails are public records, simultaneous or near simultaneously emailed by a quorum of the governing body could be a public meeting, has not been decided. Well, I didn't change the slide, you need to cross off the knot. It's not a big surprise to any municipal attorneys, but a few years ago, and I didn't, I'm sorry, I just didn't have time to change the slide, it was decided in a case with Tri-Met. And without going into a lot of details, I will read you one short thing that is on your dais if you want. A good colleague, Chad Jacobs, wrote this for the League of Oregon Cities, and on the second page, he writes that the court decided in that case it'd be a violation of law if a quorum, four or more, of a governing body discuss an issue on a Facebook thread over a period of several days, or if a quorum reads and posts responses to an online article in the comments section, you know, again, having to do with city business. And, and that's true even if it's not convened in a typical section. In other words, what it says, it doesn't matter the quorum never convened at once at the same time in these types of situations, the prohibition to quote "meet" applies even though, even through these serial communications. And without going into a lot of boring detail, that happened with Lane County, and they got tagged for a lot of attorney fees several years back. And that was really egregious, what they were doing. It was not an accident at all, so they probably deserved to be tagged. But you need to consider this, please don't get into anything where you're kind of starting a discussion that could end up, oh gee, that was kind of a meeting in a way. Because even if it's not something that's a technical violation of the public meeting laws, it, it again, kind of smacks of backroom decision-making, and a lack of transparency. Anything on public meetings before I go to public records? Okay. You can see why Matt really loved this. It's just fascinating stuff. Short answer on public record, just basically about everything. Writings, emails, documents, regardless of the form, that are related to the conduct of the public's business, that are prepared, owned, used, or retained by the public body, doesn't matter whether we created initially, if we have it, or have even the right to get it, is considered a public record. There's very limited exceptions or exemptions. Any discussion in email having to do with that is probably going to be a public record. And this goes to the old newspaper rule. I don't know how many of you have heard about the newspaper rule. You know what the newspaper rule is, don't you, Matt? The newspaper rule says, don't put something in an email that you don't want to see on the front page of the newspaper. And, and of course, that's a little broad statement, but with regard to talking with staff, or even frankly, with a citizen, if you're talking just with a citizen, but it's definitely about the business that you do, that's a public record. And that doesn't mean you can't do it, but just realize that somebody could say, hey, I want that email. And it doesn't matter that it's on your personal email, it doesn't matter that it's on your personal phone or computer, that's a public record, and would need to be turned over. Years and years and years ago, gosh, I don't know if it's going on 20 years or no, not, and some of you may remember this, the city of Beaverton got into a tussle with Nike. City Beaverton just thought it would be keen if they could annex Nike, which was an unincorporated Washington County. And they, they had a lot of resources, so they kind of went for it. Well, you know, Nike has a lot of resources too. And they got in a serious court battle, and a lot of records had to get turned over. And one of the records, a planner for the city of Beaverton was saying to, I believe the mayor, about this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, and he ends it with saying, ah, it's good to be king. And although substantively, that statement didn't have anything to do with anything, that statement did not please the judge, right? I mean, it's just something that if you, you know, could think about it for a moment, you're not going to put in an email. So always think about what you're putting in an email, I'll let you have that advice for non-planning commission things too. And a lot of you probably already know about being careful about looking twice before you hit send. So, um, okay, and that is the end. Any questions on public records or any of the other topics? Not bad, I think that was barely 45 minutes.
Sorry, I have a quick question.
Sure.
So for the conflict of interest, on what situation would that apply?
So if, for the planning commission, it's kind of hard, but I'll use an example, if a planning commissioner owned a piece of property, and there was a matter before the planning commission that would definitely increase the value of that property, that would be an actual conflict of interest, and they could not be involved. If they're doing something, maybe it's possible that it would be, but it's not a sure thing, then that would be a potential conflict of interest. They would still have to declare that potential conflict of interest, but they could vote then. But if it's an actual conflict, they can't be involved. And, and by the way, I didn't put this in my notes or stuff, but you know, it's, that's, that's not like an ex parte contact where you get remanded, and so the city has to do a bunch of work. That actually is a little fine, you know? And I don't know, I think they're still pretty small, but you know, that's a, that's an O G E C thing that you have to go tell them why you broke the rule, right? That's one of the conflict rules, like, so, you know, like the gift rules and stuff, which, by the way, I only included those because those are land use ones, there's a lot more other advice, and Melissa, if you can help me remember, I think we have some other resources for general government ethics stuff that we can get you folks that I was planning on doing. I touched on conflict of interest and bias in ex parte context, because those are the common ones that we have on, on the land use arena. So any questions on anything else?
Yeah, if we're allowed to ask.
Sure, go for it.
You were saying that meetings are emails that were going back and forth, when you call it serialized.
Serial meetings. Can be.
You're right, which makes you wonder then, why isn't it that perhaps there was a restructuring of electronic communication with the counselors, in which there's a ready and public access, right?
Yeah. I've heard of that. I, I have heard, I don't know this for certain, but I have heard Salem does something like that. And, and the question really is one of both the technical ability, which I don't think it would be real hard, but also frankly, it's like, you know, if it's something that's worth talking about in a meeting, let's talk about it in the meeting, I, I think. So I wasn't really in favor of the Salem idea, I thought it was, it was a novel way to do it, but in essence, you're having a running meeting kind of, and you don't have that give and take that you have in a, in like a personal or a Zoom meeting.
Just on the off chance that, you know, the council might be afraid.
Right.
Things forward, right, so there could actually be a reduction in overall quality.
Right. Yeah, no, it's, it's something to consider. Any other questions? No?
No, just, you know, thank you for taking the opportunity to do this, I mean, I think it's super important. You know, we do tend to do a lot more legislative stuff here, but you know, it's, it's a good reminder that this isn't just applicable on the planning commission in any nature that we do our work in the public, whether it's this committee, or whether it's, you know, parks or something like that. And actually, some of this stuff, I mean, is generally good practice if you're a nonprofit or anything like that, so, you know, it's, it's, it's good stuff. And this is probably the last time I give this to the planning commission.
This is going to be the last time, I don't think the council is going to make me do it before I take off. For those of you who don't know, I'm trying to retire. The date's a little uncertain, it's supposed to be the end of February. I told them if they found somebody sooner, I'd be glad to leave. I'm clear what the timing will be. But yeah, Matt's right, I'm kind of hoping this is the last time.
No, and, you know, I appreciate you taking the time, I mean, the video is out there. If you have any refreshers, or you have any specific questions, you can reach out to the city attorney Shane, or Melissa, Adam, you know, or if you're really desperate, don't email Ron, because two people in the planning commission, right? I paid attention, I took notes. Angelica, what do you think? Is it exciting?
I yawned.
You're still awake. You're still awake, I love it. The first time I went through this, Mark Calier said if I fell asleep, I had to bring pizza the next meeting.
Honestly, I think I pinched myself once to not fall asleep.
I love it. All right. So now we're moving on to agenda item number six. How are we doing on time? Everybody doing okay? Do we need to take a break? Five-minute bio break, we good? I mean, we haven't been here more than about 40 minutes, and a hot minute, so I'm just checking in. Everybody good? Great, all right. We have a public hearing on the draft amendments to the Kaiser Development Code, KDC, related to land use application process for conditional use permits and variances. I will open the public hearing at, if I wait 30 seconds, it'll be exactly seven o'clock. I'm kidding, open the public hearing at 6:58. I'm on one tonight, I'm sorry. I don't want to stay on the record that I had a rock star before I came to work, but I guess it's on the record now, since we're open, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chair Lawyer, planning commissioners, yes, so tonight, before you for consideration and public hearing, are draft text amendments that are proposed for seven separate sections of the development code.
I set that with my mic off. No, she's never that quiet.
I know.
As long as the sound guy's not here, you'll hear me, we're good.
Hello?
Is that better?
It's not really, is it? I know, that's wild, maybe they, maybe they turned me down in the house, they learned, they're like, hey, this guy's loud. All right, so before, before us tonight, or before you all tonight for consideration, are some proposed text amendments to seven separate sections of the development code, and they are pertaining to basically administrative land use proceedings and processes that we, we do here, how, how we do what we do for land use. If you remember, a couple meetings ago, planning commission had encouraged, directed, I don't know what the right word is, asked staff nicely to look into what some of the other jurisdictions in our area do, how those planning commissions function, what types of different decision-making that they do. And there was an expressed interest, just from a majority, that said, we'd like to kind of look at possibly doing more. So staff spent some time, and when I say staff, it's me and Dina. Dina's not here tonight, she's out of town, but really, Dina, Dina created this great chart, which I did put on the dais, it was in the packet, but then when I looked at it in the packet, like, it's a little small, so if you're not looking at it on a digital device, unless you've got like super magnifying glasses or something, I did make it a little bit bigger for you, but we created a chart, it kind of shows, you know, we didn't, we didn't pick every city in the state of Oregon, we picked a few that are close to us, that are near us, and, and basically, as you can see from the chart, there's not one size fits all, it's not like every city does it the same way. Certain cities, their planning commissions might, might do subdivisions, or they might do different, you know, land use things like partitions. However, as a staff, we sat down, we looked, we talked about the processes that we currently do that have been administrative, just staff-level decisions, and said, well, what are, what are things that might make sense in our mind for planning commission to look at? And so before you tonight, I'm recommending that planning commission, if they so wish, to expand their scope, that there's a couple of specific places where I think it could make sense for planning commission to weigh in and be a decision-maker, and that's in the area of variances and conditional use permits. So, you know, just as, I know that you guys read my staff reports, and they're amazing, and they're super fun to read, so we're just going to kind of talk a little bit here, and you can ask me questions. But I do kind of want to give just a little bit of an overview. So with a variance, basically, there are times where a developer or a property owner will come in, and they want to do something with their property, and they can't quite make it work with what our existing standards in the development code say they have to do. And so they can request a variance to a quantifiable standard. So for example, if you had, right now, we have a 4,000 square foot minimum lot size, if somebody came in, they want to divide their property, and they went through survey work, and they said, oh, my lot size is 3,999.9 square feet after survey, they might, they might consider applying for a variance for that, or a setback that they required 20, and they've got 19 feet, or something like that. Generally, people figure out how to make it work, but there are times where variances are requested. Sometimes they're related to safety, sometimes they're related because a lot is a very odd shape, and it's constrained, and it has some built-in constraints. So there's a bunch of different reasons, but regardless of the reason, it's asking for an exception to a standard. And so as we looked at that from a staff level, we feel that that could be an appropriate venue for planning commission to weigh in on. Because when those exceptions are granted, they may have some impacts to adjacent neighbors or different, you know, neighborhoods or, or whatever. So that's one of the areas that we're recommending, if planning commission wishes to expand, that might be a good place for planning commission, if there's a variance request that comes in, that it would come to planning commission for hearing and decision, as opposed to a staff-level decision that Shane essentially writes based on, if they make a good enough argument. And then the other one is, you're right, I mean, that's kind of how it is, there's criteria that are listed, did you make a good enough argument as to how you meet those criteria, and then we say yay or nay, or generally, as Shannon alluded to, almost any decision I've ever written is a yay with conditions. It's never a, yes, your application is perfect, and there's no conditions on you. But, so variances is one. We have, currently, the way we drafted the code, and this is kind of a decision point, we're going to be asking for some input from planning, or I'm asking for some input from planning commission. We have currently in our code, we have a minor variance and a major variance. Minor variance is defined as a 20% change, 20% or less, and it has a little lessened criteria than a major variance. The draft language before you would have all variances go to planning commission. One consideration that planning commission may want to entertain is, do we want to hear all the variances, or do we want to hear just the major variances? And maybe leave the minor variance with staff. It really is dependent on what planning commission desires and how involved they want to be. So that's, I wanted to point out that breaking point, the way that the text is written, because they're grouped together, frankly, it was much easier to just go, okay, we're going to recommend it, just, we're just going to do it, but I want to bring that up to you for your consideration. The second category that we're proposing to bring with these changes is the conditional use permits. And conditional use permits, they vary on And conditional use permits, they vary on what you need a conditional use permit for. But specifically, I want to point out a few conditional use permits that we're not proposing to bring to you. Currently, if an electronic message center sign goes up along River Road or on anywhere, it requires a conditional use permit. It is a very prescriptive path to get it. It requires a 25% reduction in overall signage and it requires adherence to static message, not changing more than every 10 seconds, I think is now what it is. Used to be, yeah, I think it's either 10 or 15. Sorry, can't remember off the top of my head. But anyway, it's a very prescriptive process for somebody to go to to get electronic message sign. And as the city attorney Johnson has always told me in my career here, as Shane, remember, a conditional use is a use that is permitted with conditions. It's not something that you can say, no, you can't do it. It's, you can do it with appropriate conditions applied. Is that fair to say it that way? Okay, I figured he'd hit me if I said it wrong. But, so we're not, we're not planning on bringing to Planning Commission conditional uses for signs, nor conditional uses for floodplain, and not, and not variances for floodplain either, by the way. That'd be a more technical thing. So. And I think that was it. I think there was those, those couple of conditional uses, they would stay the way they are currently and they wouldn't come to Planning Commission. But example, case in point, I just approved a conditional use last week for a church in the nearby neighborhood. They want to operate a daycare center out of the church and they've never done that. And because it's in a residential zone, it's a kind of a pre-existing non-conforming use kind of deal, because it's not on an arterial or a collector street. But they, in the zoning and what they're, what they're at right now, because they want to do a daycare for more than 15 children eventually, they have to do, go through a conditional use process. So we just issued a conditional use process on, or a conditional use permit for that property literally last week. It's in the appeal period right now. So, so that would be one that if these changes were moved forward, a case like that would actually come to you all for your consideration to say, okay, what are the appropriate conditions to place on these? The other thing I want to make sure that you're aware of is when we bring things to a board like y'all, or if I go to the hearings officer, staff still writes the findings and we make a recommendation, which kind of spell out what those criteria are and those findings are. So there's not an expectation that you all have to become an absolute expert. And as y'all know, me, I'm not an expert either. So like, that's, that's all right. We're in the same boat. But you don't have to be an expert. We will provide you with, I hope I will provide you with adequate information to be able to see like, okay, here's the application, here's the criteria. How does it align? What is staff recommending? So that's, that's one thing I just want to make sure you're aware of. It's not like we come and throw a bunch of stuff at you and say, hey, decide what to do. There will, there would still be a recommendation. We would recommend the conditions of approval, or we would recommend denial. But ultimately, it would come to you for consideration in the open forum to allow people to weigh in. And historically, that's not, for those couple of application types, that's not something we've done. The other thing I want to point out, sorry, I'm going long. I think Shannon got, he infected me a little bit. No, I'm always long-winded, we know. The other thing is, we looked, I looked kind of hard at what some of the other cities did where they were doing more of the quasi judicial. I think there was a few planning commissioners that maybe had some interest in, well, what if we looked at subdivision approvals? Or we looked at every, you know, multifamily building permit, or we were looking at, you know, all these other types of things. And ultimately, I'm not, I'm not making that as a, as a staff recommendation, just based from workload and process and kind of consistency with how we've always done things here and the relationship we have with developers and property owners and the expectations they have. There could create, that could create some timing issues for us. But the flip side is, is if Planning Commission is very, you know, gung ho and wants to do more, that is clearly within your rights to do that. I would just ask that if there are, if there are some specific type of case that you really have a desire to start being the decision maker on, we'd probably need to have, I mean, maybe spend a little more time getting you some info on what that would look like. Yeah, go ahead.
Shane, is it, is it true to say that, but Kaiser, all of these cities are under the 25,000 population limit? But probably between that 10 and 25,000 population, population limit?
Yeah, I can't remember how big Albany is now.
But in these cases, the, the things that they may be doing are probably allowable because of provisions of House Bill 2001 that may not have touched those jurisdictions, whereas because of our, the size of Kaiser, where we had different requirements of House Bill 2001 specifically related to, you know, all the changes we went through over the last couple of years. So I think it's just important to point that out that some of these cities may have more opportunity because the state rules did not require those jurisdictions to enforce nearly the level of things that was required for Kaiser. Is that, would that be an accurate statement?
I mean, I, I think, yes, you're absolutely right. Depending on where their populations are, they may not have quite as many mandates. The other thing, so I mean, I'm not going to name any of these cities or jurisdictions, but I do have some history with a couple of them based on acquaintances that I know who've worked in some of these places. And some of the cities around Oregon, I won't even say this list, all right? Like, forget about this list. We want to, we'll pretend it's not about this list. There are, there are some towns and cities where Planning Commission may operate in a way that I would say is not maybe super consistent with the presentation that our city attorney just gave us, right? They, they might just kind of go, no, this is what we want to do. And, right. So, so yeah, so I think that's something just, just to consider. There, there is sometimes those kinds of situations, especially in smaller communities. Because they may not have full-time planning staff. That's the other thing to consider. Some of, some cities will have maybe one person to do some planning work, but they may be supported by a council of governments. Or they may contract out a lot of things. So they don't have the staff to do land use decisions, so it needs to go to a Planning Commission or an outside source. So that, that's the other piece, I think, that kind of falls into play.
That's great context. Thank you.
Shannon, do you need to say something?
Sure.
Okay. Shannon's gonna say something about this as well tonight, so.
Always glad to weigh in. How's this mic? Working? Okay. One of the things Shane touched on that I'll mention too is, even with these two conditional uses and variances, but particularly if you added more, but there can be possibility of timing issues. So you, you, I won't use the word expect, but it would not be unusual for us to say, you know, we're gonna move the meeting up two weeks or reschedule that. And I can't remember if I mentioned the 120 day rule, but we have applicants that have stuff pending. We try to get stuff out quickly. The decision has to be at this level, would have to be made well within the 120 days to allow time for appeal, internal appeals after that. So that's one of the points I was gonna make. And I don't, don't get me wrong. I don't think it's gonna be that burdensome. I don't think it's gonna happen that often, but it can happen. And then the other thing, kind of unconnected, the substantive part, is I was talking to Shane earlier today. Your folks call entirely, but don't feel like you need to make the final decision tonight. My preference on this, even if we get to the end of the text changes, is that you continue the hearing, mostly to give yours truly another chance to double check some stuff, because I was not able to get into as deep as I thought. Plus, it's always good on, on these to kind of take a final look at it if you make any tweaks. But we can decide that towards the end of the hearing. If you want to do, go forward and everybody's comfortable with it, we can go that direction too.
So here's my process question on that. After this hearing today, we lose two of our commissioners. One of them's not here right now, and we'll have two new commissioners.
Oh, I didn't think about that.
What does that do?
That changes things a little bit. I forgot what time of year we're in, Matt. You are right. So the next meeting, the October meeting, is the changeover meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, it'd probably be better if you guys just decided tonight.
Well.
I mean, you don't have to. It's not, it's really not a big deal one way or the other. I, I just had mentioned, I did not realize that change, so I'm kind of embarrassed about that. I don't like to see a change, I mean, of one is fine, but how many, how many we got changeover? Two?
Two. One, one of them's not here right now. That's, that's not gonna be on the Planning Commission next month, but.
Yeah. And we have
I mean, we still have.
Five of you tonight. I, you know, why don't we just see how this goes? Again, like a lot of changes that we make, the, the number of pages seems like a lot, but the actual changes are few and you folks are used to that. So why don't we just see how we get through? Oftentimes on these things, yours truly kind of makes some tweaks between Planning Commission and Council anyway that are really not substantive at all, just clarification ones. So that's probably the direction we'll go.
Okay. I don't, I don't know how to, maybe I don't know how to ask this question.
Go ahead. Just jump in.
If, because I mean, we're in the public hearing piece of it right now. If we, if we close the public hearing and said, you know, we just want to make a motion to table this, take it up in October, restart it all brand new scratch with a couple of brand new planning commissioners, and then it gives you time to, I don't know, does that remedy?
Yeah, and I don't think you'll have to do that. And I, I, if you folks feel at all at the end of the evening that you're uncomfortable with a change, like if you, if you feel like you need to make a change that's substantive and you want to see it in writing, then that's the time where I'm uncomfortable making a change. It's not, it, what I have found, and I can't remember which item it was, is that if you folks start making changes on the fly and you don't actually see them in writing, and then I'm maybe gonna recommend, I or Shane's basically saying, well, the Planning Commission recommended X, but it's kind of X-ish changes, then that becomes awkward for us. Because we don't want to be accused of tweaking something the Planning Commission didn't approve. That's, that's what I tried to avoid. I don't see it in this setting, though. I think the only thing that I would make tweaks on are something that are not substantive at all, that you're not gonna have any concerns about. So I'll, why don't I just take back everything I just said?
Well, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. It literally just dawned on me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, man. I didn't, I really didn't think about that either. I forgot the the turnover. So.
Are we, are you good?
Yeah, yeah. And to be fair, I mean, Chair Lawyer, thank you for bringing that up because when Shannon talked to me about that earlier today, I didn't think about that at all. The fact that, oh yeah, that'll be different people and we'll have started a public hearing. Because he said, I think I'm gonna recommend that we maybe just carry that forward. And I'm like, oh, okay, that's fine. But anyway, thank you for bringing that up. I think, the other thing, the non-attorney in the room, I would say that, I believe that as we go through and we talk about these things, I want to get any questions y'all have answered. But unlike most of the text amendments, when we bring them to you, most of the text amendment is truly changing a standard. This is truly just changing process. So the, the text changes that we're proposing is, it's not changing anything on what it takes to approve these land uses. It's just who's approving them. So I think if we can get clarity from Planning Commission on what the desire is, and I don't know, maybe Counselor Johnson can coach how a motion would need to look, but giving some flexibility to the legal department to make sure that they align things to your wishes, I, I think we could probably get there all right.
My, and that's a very good point, a very good point, Shane. These are non-substantive changes. It's a process only. The only concern I have that I was gonna do with or without you anyway was to make sure, because there's several things that are kind of repeated. And I want to be absolutely sure that they all jive. And so, and I think Shane made all the appropriate changes, but I didn't get a chance to look at them again. So I, I think we'll be fine.
All right. Commissioners, questions, comments, thoughts? Commissioner Grins?
I have a couple of questions for Shane. First one's kind of a technical question. So two different cases, two different process, if this goes forward, two different processes, right? But they're together. Subdivision with a variance.
Sure. Yep.
Would that go here or would that go to the hearings officer?
So currently what the language says in the code, and we didn't, we didn't change this language. We actually kept it in. I did have to change a reference. So historically, if you have had a land use decision that is, say, a type one staff level decision, and then a type, with a type two Planning Commission or City Council, it gets held at the higher level. So we have had cases where one part of the application may be a staff level decision, but the other part of it's a hearings officer decision. So instead, they took it together and it gets all heard at the hearings officer's level. Now, to be fair, there are some options, depending on how, this gets a little bit nerdy, but so there are certain, in this case, because of what's proposed, I'm gonna talk about an example that's theoretical, but it would be proposed, that's a real world thing if we make this change. So if somebody comes in for a partition currently, that partition is a staff level decision. There's a request for comments. It goes out to neighbors. But it's a decision that I ultimately make and place conditions on it based on the comments that we receive. For future, if somebody comes in and says, okay, I want to partition my property and I'm gonna turn from one property into two, but I'm gonna request a variance to a setback, now that whole thing is gonna come to Planning Commission. And the reason it would have to, they wouldn't even have an option. Because the only way that you can approve the partitioning is if you grant the variance. Now, if they wanted to do a partitioning and the variance was unrelated to being necessary to divide the land, but instead it was for some other reason, they wanted a variance for a design or, I mean, they wanted a variance for the future house or something like that, then the partition part wouldn't come to Planning Commission and it could be only that portion. But the way the code is written now is if you have multiple application types and you're doing a joint application that you're processing it all together, the higher level, the whole thing would go. So the whole thing would go to a hearings officer or the whole thing would come to a Planning Commission if there was a variance involved or a conditional use along with something else.
There was a question.
Not sure the best way to ask is, is this something, are you taking cue off of our previous meetings? You just kind of throwing us a bone here to have more reasons to meet? I know Matt likes coming. Is this, is this going to be more or less work for staff?
I don't know yet. I, I'm a.
It's gonna be more. I mean, categorically, it's gonna be more. I mean, I can tell, I'm not even you and I know it's gonna be more work.
It might be a little more work for staff.
I mean, that's, it's a fact, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, there, obviously there would be things that come to a meeting that didn't have to used to come to a meeting. Yeah, I mean, obviously, definitely. This, this was not necessarily a Shane idea. I hadn't really thought about it. But Planning Commission raised it. And so, you know, like, we looked into it. And, and as I said, I'm, I'm comfortable with the recommendation that I'm making tonight. I think there's things in it that, that make a lot of sense. But at the same time, if Planning Commission were to say, you know what, never mind, we don't want to mess with it, or we really don't want to have a bunch of angry people in here yelling at us, we'll just let them call Shane on the phone and yell at him instead. Like, that's fine. Like, I get paid. You guys don't get paid. But yeah, I, so, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
What's that?
Wasn't he?
Commissioner Anderson?
I just have a question. I know this is a bench moment, but I'm not sure how to use it, how to do the comparison.
It's shaded.
Oh, sure. Yeah. So. Yeah, the, the little one was harder to read than the bigger one, so I made a photocopy because I made it in a bigger. So the way that the chart is, the, the yellow-ish part, the shaded part, that represents land use types that the decision is made. So that's where the, you're actually making the decision of approval versus denial on those application types in the different communities. And then the stuff that is non-shaded are things that you're making recommendations on.
So looking at this, almost all the other cities make more of the decisions in PC.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, yeah, so that, in, in the other cities we looked at, they all do have a couple more items that they make decisions on. And most of them weighed in on conditional uses. And quite a few of them waved in on variances. And so we kind of looked at that and said, well, here's what some of the others. And again, that was kind of the direction given, was take a look at it, see if there are some areas that we can expand our role. So that's kind of what we landed on as a staff, looking at it, that we thought seemed reasonable if Planning Commission wanted to tackle those things.
I'm just saying that even with the changes that we recommended. I'm just saying that even with the changes that we recommended, we still.
Oh, yeah, we're still right in the, similar to others, or, or still like less, I mean, Woodburn has a whole bunch of stuff that they do.
But, Shane, this is current, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is current.
This is, it would add.
Yeah, it would add two more categories that don't, that aren't on there, yep.
Right, it would add two more categories. Right, it's, it's still fairly limited. Uh, my experience is more, more cities do have Planning Commissioners deal with that. This issue, by the way, and I think I mentioned it a, a few meetings ago when this issue was first discussed, has come up before, at least once, maybe twice, over the, the many years, the Planning Commission decides, you know, we'd like to hear more or not. So it's not uncommon, it's kind of one of those rotating things. It kind of depends on the commission, it kind of depends on how busy you are. And, and it's obviously a council decision ultimately, but certainly you folks, like Shane mentioned earlier, can make the recommendation as you see fit, leave it the way it is, take the staff recommendation, add more to it. The, the issue of the combined thing, I'm really glad Jeremy talked, brought that up, you and, you and I talked about it. Now, the example you used, that the variance is required to allow the partition, it would obviously go to the Planning Commission. Where would it be appealed after that?
For the decisions?
If it was a partition variance combo? That, and I'm not.
Well, it, it's held at the higher level, so.
No, I mean, it starts with the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
But, that would be, oh, no, actually, that'd be a final decision, excuse me, I'm sorry, that'd be a final decision.
Right.
And less appealed.
Yes.
Okay, and then, okay, we can figure out the other part.
Yeah.
Later. But, but again, the, the second part of Shane's hypothetical is if it was a variance, if it was a setback that didn't affect
Right.
the actual partition criteria, uh, that would be separated.
Right.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair Lawyer. So, in making a decision about this, the things that I would want to know are, is this going to be more efficient for the city? Or, and, is it going to, and/or is it going to be a better decision process for the people of Kaiser, or the people who are requesting these variances or conditional uses?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think there's a, it's a difficult thing for me to answer. I would say, I think it depends on where your perspective or your interest lies. One thing that we've, we've heard, or that at least that I've heard, we've had pretty robust conversations here at Planning Commission about public involvement, about people in neighborhoods understanding what's going on, and, and how you get the word out, and all of those things, and things that affect them, and having a voice. So clearly, a staff-level decision that's rendered out of my office with no real public process other than a notice of a decision that's sent out, there's not a lot there. So, these things, you know, there would be, and, so conditional use, it's a, it's a notice of the decision. It's not even like a request for comments, there's no hearing, there's no, that, that's just not what the type of land use that it is, because it's considered kind of a lower threshold. So that would create an avenue, with these changes, it would create an avenue where certain application types would invite a little bit more public participation. Now, the flip side is, for the private property owner, who's wanting to apply for a land use decision, most developers who've worked with me, and I've been, I've been here forever, right? I mean, like, 26 years I've worked at the city, and a lot of developers in town know me and have for a long time. They kind of know how we do things here in Kaiser. And so, there is a level of assurance that if somebody comes in and talks to me about their proposed project, and I can say, well, you know what the code says, you've got this, this, and this, you're going to need to show how you're going to meet all those things, they are going to kind of know that, oh, yeah, he's going to put a bunch of conditions on me, but I'm pretty assured that I can move forward with my project at some point, right? I mean, there's just that level of, I don't know, consistency. Where, obviously, coming to an open, more open forum, there's maybe a little less assurance for a private property owner on some regard, especially with variances. They're, they're, they're pretty subjective anyway, I mean, they're not, it's not exactly the most clean thing with variances. Which is, honestly, as a staff person, that's frankly one of the things that I'm like, yeah, I'm okay with you guys deciding some of these variances, because they can be very difficult, and, and it's, it's, it is somewhat of a judgment call. So, um, does that help? As far as efficiency goes, Shane, we're the government, we're always a little bit more efficient than a lot of other governments, being a lean government. And if we make these changes, then our process will change from what it is currently. I don't know that it will be least efi, less efficient from a staff level. It might take a little bit more time in certain instances. It also might take about the same amount of time. Oh, I mean, out, many times. So, yeah.
Yep, that helps, thanks.
Okay.
You know, as I'm sitting here and I'm listening to this, my, my legislative brain went off. You guys looked at House Bill 3414?
Remind me which one it is, man, I've looked at it, I've looked at a bunch of them. Oh, is this the one where we have to allow variances possibly?
It may just completely preclude.
I don't think it. Did it get engrossed?
Yeah.
It passed?
It did, it's engrossed. I'm, I just looked at it. It's engrossed, B, B got engrossed. So, I mean, this, this might just be a moot conversation anyways.
Well, those are, I mean, that's specific to housing, though, right? I mean, it's related to housing only, so I didn't know that that actually had gotten passed off the floor.
It just trickled back into my brain, so House Bill 3414B, the catch line requires local governments to approve certain adjustments to land use regulations for housing development within an urban growth boundary, so I just want to put that on the record for, for purpose of the discussion. So as it relates to anything in the RS zone, effectively.
There are some sideboards on there, right?
There are, I mean, it's, right, but, you'll, obviously, you'll have to probably take a look at it, Counselor, but.
Yeah, that's a, mm.
Sorry, I don't mean to throw.
No, thanks, it makes my life more awesome.
I know you had your hand up before I.
It's okay, Jane, she got half of my question answered. Major versus minor, lumping those together.
Yeah.
Is that going to be super annoying for people who are just trying to do minor things and now have to come before us and do all of that?
So I, I have two perspectives of this. Yes, it'll be more work for them. But, I should have brought you guys' numbers, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't poll and say, how many variances have we approved this year?
That was my other question.
Uh, how many invariances have we approved the last three years? How many variances have we approved in the last 20 years? There's not a ton. So, I am a, I'm not a great rule follower in my personal life, you can ask my wife this, but I do, like, take value in my role, which is essentially to uphold what the city's rules are and regulations. I was a code enforcement guy for a long time in my career, like, I'm used to rules and regulations. And when we have, in our city, we've adopted certain minimum standards, it is my belief that you should adhere to those minimum standards. There's a reason that the rule is there, you know, if, so variances are not greatly encouraged, and they're not greatly exercised, because, one, our standards are fairly reasonable, and, two, people understand that, well, okay, tell me how you're going to justify, for a major variance, for example, the first criteria out the chute, it's the minimum necessary to allow development of the property with an allowed use of the site. That criteria is almost always impossible to justify unless they have a very oddly shaped parcel, or there's some very unique circumstance about it, um, for that. Whereas a minor variance is more the intent and purpose of the standard that's being sought to be varied is met. So if it's a setback, the intent and purpose is you allow adequate space, you allow, you know, for safety and those kinds of things. So there have been a handful of times where somebody wants to shrink a setback by a little bit, because that's what they need to allow a building footprint on a site, but they're almost there, and, oh, by the way, the adjacent property is, there's no other buildings that are close to it, or it's up next to the Parkway, for example, we've, I did a, a variance a couple of years ago for a parking lot area in association with an apartment complex that butted up to the Salem Parkway. So clearly, that setback is there to protect it from adjacent uses. There's not an adjacent use that needs to be protected, so we were able to support that. But, but, yeah, so, yeah, it would, it would take an applicant a little bit longer, it would take them more hoops to jump through. The flip side is, I look at it a little bit as, I don't really think variances are things that we should be handing out like candy. And so I think it will also conversely act as a little bit of a deterrent, and really challenge developers and property owners to go, okay, well, these are the rules that I'm within, so how, what can I figure out to do that will work? Because there's a lot of different options out there, maybe I need to redesign this a little bit, but I can make that work where they may go, you know what, I don't want to jump through the hoops of going before Planning Commission for this little tiny thing. So, I don't know, and, and it's hard, some cities have things like, that are considered adjustments, which some, I think, there's a couple, uh, that are maybe like a 10% change, where it's just automatic, like, you pay for it and you get it. Which seems weird to me, but, it, it doesn't ring true to me, but there, there are some other options that if, like I said, if Planning Commission really wanted us to dig in, like, I could dig in and get you more info on that. So.
Please.
So, you brought this proposal, obviously you had a reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you recall back in June, Commissioner, we had a conversation as a, as a Planning Commission, we just talked a, a bit about, I think, some of the philosophy, which was, as Shane mentioned, on what are the limited things that this body can do to engage the process, and, and what are some of the things? And, you know, this was, I think, the result of that conversation, where it was like, you know, what are the options? What can this body do other than just legislative amendments? And I say just in jest, meaning.
Right.
You know, that's historically what we've been doing. So, um, I think that's, you're being responsive to what, um, this body asked back in June, and that's why we're here. And your analysis basically says these are sort of the low-hanging fruit things, where it's like, yeah.
Yes.
What I'm suggesting, I remember, but he only selected these, right, a lot of, so, he, you had a reason, justification for those to come before these commissions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, um, again, so with variances, because they are asking for an exception to a rule, and they have the potential to impact a neighbor, so if I have two next-door neighbors and somebody wants to get a variance to a setback, and now my house is going to be closer to that neighbor's house than it would have been by the minimum standard, that's something that can impact a neighborhood, or a specific neighbor. So for my perspective, based on what Planning Commission asked for from staff, it was, this is an example of one of those cases, that Planning Commission is at least indicating that they maybe have more interests to be involved with. So that's why we looked at variances specifically, and conditional uses, same kind of issue, not as much as to whether or not you'd approve it or not, but, for example, with a conditional use, there is some latitude on what kind of conditions do you place. So, for example, um, in our child daycare situation, now, this one, not a great example, because it's already like a functioning house of worship, like, honestly, it's about as good as possibly could be set up to run a daycare out of, like, they already have children's rooms that are, I mean, it's, nobody's going to notice. But, if it was my neighbor, where I live in a residential neighborhood, and they wanted to run a child daycare for more than 15, 16, I think it's 16 is the number now for the state rules, so like, a larger daycare, same zoning, they can apply for that same conditional use. And those kinds of uses can impact neighborhoods at a level that is a little different than the one I just processed last week, but it is something that I feel like when Planning Commission says, hey, we want to be more engaged with what's impacting the neighbors in the neighborhood, that's another example where I look at that as being an appropriate avenue for Planning Commission to consider, okay, what are the appropriate conditions to place on this type of an application to mitigate those impacts? So that's, that was the reasoning behind it. Between that, and also kind of looking at, there's some similarities with what the other cities did, which gives some similarity for y'all, which is, which is what you asked me to bring back to you.
And I have to correct myself, when I look, the House Bill 3414 was engrossed, not enrolled, it did not pass.
Okay.
Correction.
Thank goodness.
I was.
Because I was having a little bit of a.
I was looking at the right bill number, just the wrong year.
Okay.
So, correction for.
Okay, thank you, because I kind of had a little bit of a heart attack there, I was like, oh, no, really, again?
The wrong, the wrong legislative session, so I just wanted to correct myself for the.
Okay. All right, well, that's a little, that, that makes me breathe a little bit easier, because I thought, oh, man, is there really another thing?
No, I apologize.
Is taking away our abilities to do our jobs, awesome.
Okay, so, uh, do we have anybody signed up for public testimony on this issue this evening? Any written comments that came in? None. Commissioners, any other questions on this item here?
Do you want to ask?
Yeah, right. Anybody out here want to opine? You're welcome to come forward if you want to talk about this, it's very exciting. Come on, Robin, now you want to. No? Okay. Uh, well, if we're, I mean, if we're, if we're good, I'll close the public hearing. Right, yep. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing at 7:41. And Commissioner Herbert.
Is this discussion time?
Uh, well, we can put a motion on the table if we want. And then after a motion's on the table, we can wait for a second, and if there's a second, we can have discussion.
I'll put forward a motion.
Okay.
Commissioner.
I move that we deny this proposal.
That's no much.
And I, and I would suggest that, um, recommend not adopting.
I recommend we not adopt this proposal.
So we have a motion?
All right, least popular, got it.
Well, can we discuss that, like, why?
Well, no, because we don't have a second.
So we have to have a second?
We, we have to have a second for discussion, correct? Yeah.
But what if we don't, nobody wants to second it?
You know, I, I'm, I'm going to second it because I want to hear some discussion on this. So we have a motion to, uh, what'd you, you had a great, not approve the recommended tax amendments in a second, or by Commissioner Grinns, in a second, by Commissioner Lawyer. Discussion. Commissioner Herbert.
I would just like to know why you don't want to move forward with it, Commissioner Grinns.
I think it's going to be.
Check your mic.
It's on, sorry. I think it's going to be more burdensome for staff. And I've been to a lot of Planning Commission meetings on these types of things, it's super easy to get off the rails.
I think I'm kind of struggling with that a little bit, because on one hand, I like the idea that we could have a little bit more say, but also, I've seen some of just the conversations that we've had that have gone to really interesting places. And I worry about how we could handle stuff like this. And I trust Shane, and he makes good choices.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's good to be king, right?
Hey, wait.
Let me, let me write that down.
So I think philosophically, I struggle with this, because on one hand, you know, I think that there, there's been very heavy-handed, uh, from the legislature in the last few years, and I think that, um, we're seeing that. I mean, we're literally seeing that in our neighborhoods. On the other hand, I also believe that people, um, have an inherent right to do things with their property. But does what they do with their property and impact a neighbor's property change that? And I don't know how to answer that, and I think that's a struggle that we're facing with a lot of these things that have come down. And, um, you know, the, some of the conditional use permits, I think that, you know, the variances, I mean, it's, 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 it's kind of one of those things, like, if it's one or two a year, maybe it's not that big of a deal, but if it's five or six, and, you know, s- staff is struggling to try to get a quorum of us so we can sit down and do this properly. I think that's disingenuous to the expertise of Dina and Shane and Shannon and the city manager. But at the same time, it is tough for me, I think, because, you know, the, the people that lived in their house for. But at the same time, it is tough for me, I think, because, you know, the, the people that lived in their house for twenty-five, thirty, forty years now are going to have potentially something they never could have imagined, looking right out their kitchen window. And that's a struggle. And there's nothing, I think, that would preclude that, other than maybe a potential variance. Um but even then, you know, you're walking a pretty thin line, potentially. I, I applaud Shane. I think the work that you and Dina put into this probably um is exceptional. And I like, I, I, I want to see some of this go forward, but I think in its, in its current iteration. Um I think I, I second the motion, just because I wanted to hear some dialogue, I didn't hear what people's thoughts are, because I think it's important to talk about.
I just wanted to follow up on my previous, that every one of the decisions that staff would make is appealable to either the hearings officer or council, or us.
Okay.
Well, for all the reasons that you said, I think they're important decisions enough, maybe should come before the commission. And we've been talking about the strategic plan, getting the public engaged. Well, there's the public engaged, bring them here.
Yeah. For sure.
Um I don't really know if we would get the public here for these. Maybe it's just a neighbor on some of these decisions, and they would need to know the rules. They can't just have a gut feeling that they don't want that next to their house. It has to go by the rules that we have. And so they are going to come here very biased against it, um probably. So maybe it's just opening a can of worms that ultimately is going to disappoint people who thought they could come here and, and dispute the, the thing. So I think I'm leaning toward leaving it in the city hands. That's um, I think where I'm leaning with, with Jeremy.
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for the vote. Um and uh we'll see, we'll see where we go on there. So an affirmative vote on this would mean that we are um not supporting, how did you say it?
Not.
Not adopting.
Recommended not adoption.
So an affirmative vote would be a recommendation to not adopt the text amendment in front of us today on the Kaiser Development Code. So, hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those uh. You're, so you're, you're in support of not. Okay, and I'm, and I'm. I'll say aye.
So hands please, those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. So the, the vote is four to one with mo.
It was unanimous.
Against, well, no, you voted against the motion. Meaning you did want the planning commission to take on these, correct?
No, he changed his mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's unanimous.
Yeah, we never got, we never, we never got to the nays.
Oh, I, okay.
I, I was.
That's why I was holding on.
So I, I paused, I screwed that up. I paused because I was.
So just to confirm again, the vote is five to zero, in favor of the motion?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all right. Now I want to qualify this just a little bit, and I think that it is super important to recognize that this probably took Shane and Dina a week, forty hours combined, right? Which is forty hours you guys could have otherwise been doing other things. And so I think it's important to recognize the time and effort put forward in there. And I think you were exactly responsive to what this body asked. And uh I really appreciate that. And I think uh I just want to take, take a moment to recognize that. So thank you very much. Yes, please.
Yeah, no, and, and seriously, no problem. Like this is something that, like I feel like there's like concern. These things are not personal to staff at all. I mean, this is completely the role that the planning commission has, is to bring things and provide direction to staff when it comes to these kinds of policies. So I mean, this is exactly the process and we, we're happy to do it. You asked me to give you some info, we gave you some info. And, and the follow up would be is the, you know, this, fine, this proposal, you guys are like, yeah, no, we're not interested in it. If there are other things in the future that planning commission wants us to specifically, specifically look into, we are more than happy to do that so that you can make the policy level decisions, because that ultimately gives guidance to staff as we move forward. So yes, absolutely, I appreciate the work y'all did here. I, I always feel a little bad when I bring something to you, that it's like, oh, I'm wasting your guys' time, I apologize. You know, not our intention, so, but we had that great training, so it's kind of like mix up for it tonight.
No, no, and, and I don't think this was a waste of time. I think this is exactly what was asked. Um I think that um. Yeah, thank you. Please.
So in terms of process, from here, will our recommendation to not adopt then go to council so they could say, yeah, we want them to do it anyway? Um yeah, okay. I mean, it's, it's, again, you folks make recommendations. By the way, we probably didn't explain this, but the, you, the code allows, and this was a change quite a few years ago. Used to be only the planning commission or the council could initiate a text change.
Right.
And we added staff in limited situations. We typically don't initiate things. This one was sort of a hybrid. We, we took your, your direction. I was going to try to look, but I couldn't make my phone work on whether you guys had a motion, but you pretty much initiated a text change, in a sense. You said, hey, we want to look at this. Doesn't mean you're going to adopt it. We want to look at that. Well, once that initiated, then it's a recommendation to council. So yeah, we're kind of required to set that for a hearing. I think it'll go pretty quick. Um and so I, I don't anticipate it being a big deal. But yeah, that would be the process.
All right, uh new old business. Getting exciting there.
Um okay, so just a couple of things that I wanted to kind of give you heads ups on. Heads ups? That sounded, that sounded weird. Uh a heads up on. Um so as you all know, climate friendly area equitable communities rulemaking, that's kind of been going through. There's certain things that we have to do. Uh we've had presentations on parking and climate friendly areas and all those things. Um we are officially kind of kicking off the scenario planning work, which is between Kaiser, Salem, Marion County, our region. Um we're actually having a kickoff meeting tomorrow with just staff folks with the ODOT um Department of Transportation, Oregon Department of Transportation is kind of funding the work and doing the work. And there's some consultant teams that are working with all three jurisdictions. Um there will also be like an advisory committee that's not quite officially been appointed yet, because we're still waiting on some intergovernmental agreement stuff from ODOT. But we're not delaying having an initial meeting with staff um to kind of jump into that scenario planning process. The reason I want to give you all a heads up on that is there is some question on who's going to make up the advisory committee. Uh Kaiser's going to have two representatives on the advisory committee. It's imagined that it would be uh for sure, at least one city councillor, possibly two city councillors, or it might be a city councillor and a planning commissioner. It's kind of not been quite determined yet, but I want to give you all a heads up on that so that if there is somebody on planning commission who would be very interested in being a part of the advisory committee for the scenario planning work, I'd be happy to talk with you a little bit more about it and at least kind of know that in the back of my brain. Um ultimately, what I believe will happen is that when we get the IGA, which council will have to approve, normally it would be council that would also approve, I believe. Looking for him, but I, I think they are going to be the ones that need to approve who the actual voting members of that advisory committee are. So I think it'll be an appointment from, from council ultimately, but I don't know who that's going to be yet. But I kind of wanted to throw that out there, because if anybody is super interested on planning commission, talk to me. So at least I can know that there's interest. Um but that, that is starting up, and that will inform our future transportation system plan update. Uh the one silver lining, I've told everyone, the silver lining of the scenario planning and, and some of the rules that are put on us is, it is coming with some strings attached, which is some money to help us do updates to our transportation system plan, which we've already identified that we want to do. So there's kind of some good to be had with it, hopefully. Um that's all I'm going to say about that.
What's the update on the lawsuit? Because it was supposed to be July, right? They were supposed to have the hearing in July, and then it got pushed and.
No, it, the hearing, um the oral argument before the Court of Appeals um occurred on July twelfth. Uh I was not expecting a decision until at least now. I would not be surprised at all to go further into more the winter. It'd be optimistic to have September, October, but uh there was that indication that the Court of Appeals would expedite it. Uh they like to expedite the, the briefing and the oral argument schedule, but expediting themselves to make a decision is not always in the cards, so.
So, yeah, interesting.
I will point out, I've mentioned this to Shane, I was really glad to see, and I didn't notice until a month ago, that the actual term of the goals there say, C-FEC implementation, if it stands. And so I was going to take a picture of that, send it to some of my C-FEC, anti-C-FEC buddies. But yeah, that's the status of the, the non-status of the lawsuit.
When do you need to know if commissioners want to participate, Shane?
Um sooner the better. Um like I said, I'm, we're waiting on ODOT for the IGA, the final version or the official final version.
Not just the exhibit, but the actual IGA?
Well, no, we got it. It's just there's, now there's a question with DOJ on whether or not they're going to have to do some, I, I don't know. Shannon said, I don't want it until it's the final, final one. I'm not even going to look at it until it's that. He told me that last week. Cause I was like, hey, I finally got it. Do you want to look at it? And he said, no. So.
He, he says, do you want to look at this? He says DOJ is still looking at it. No. I've had this drill before. Why don't you let me know when they're done?
They promised that it's not going to change though.
Oh, yeah.
They said it's not, it's all good to go. So, um but yeah, so probably, it would be definitely sooner than later, because I think, I mean, the hope was we would have an IGA before our city council in the month of September. And that's obviously not going to happen, because I don't have a IGA to have my attorney review yet, so.
All right.
Um yeah, so that was kind of the main thing I wanted to share. And then, you know, just a couple of other things. You've kind of seen things around town. I think with this training, it's really good to be reminded of things like ex parte contact. Um I know I have been getting a lot of input from folks, um neighbors, concerned citizens about the possibilities of what's going to happen on North River Road, south of McNary Estates Drive. And just reminder, planning commission, that is an area that will require a master plan that will be a recommendation from planning commission as the first step. So that's going to be one of those quasi judicial ones that if and when something happens, it will be coming to you all. So I would say be careful about entertaining things on that. So just for the, for what it's worth. I don't know anything more yet, and I just know I've been.
You can't tell us.
Well, yeah, and, but it is, I've definitely been fielding quite a few calls lately, so I don't know what has happened as far as somebody got, somebody stirred up, so. Anyway.
What are those crop circle things?
Uh they were, they actually, it was doing some test, um oh, well, the other life, they have the bags of erosion control bags.
Aliens.
Yeah, Geotech, they're doing Geotech and core, core testing for perk tests and stuff.
Well, that helped.
Sorry, uh so they're, they're digging holes to see about soil compaction densities and also kind of how much water the soil takes. Cause I think they're in the midst of trying to do some engineering, prelim engineering work on civil design for stormwater infrastructure, things like that. Sorry. Anyway, that's all for me for new and old business.
Great. Counsel liaison, counselor. Well, thank you, Chair Lawyer. This is kind of a unique planning commission meeting, because we had our city council meeting on Wednesday. And, I mean, on Wed- Monday, and we get this, so I can tell you something. So usually it's.
Old news.
Usually it's old news. Um so really, there isn't a whole lot to tell you, but. Got a song to say for nothing. But there is. One thing, um the city council had adopted an ordinance for, to regulate parades uh or special events. It doesn't affect parades and stuff, so, but long-term special events. So think events that last a few weeks, more than a day or two, um that um would impact neighbors. So the miracle of Christmas lights is really the only thing we have right now that this impacts. Um there's a process to go through for them to make changes to anything that they've done. You know, so they do it one year and they make a change for the next year. They need to go through a process to, for the, to get a permit for it. To allow neighbors and associated people um a chance to weigh in if it's going to affect them. So other than that, that is really all that ordinance affects. It's good to know we can do that for that, but not if you want to build a different kind of house. That's, that's good. So that was, that was something that was done. Um it was a five to one vote, and I was the only person that voted no, so. Um and, and the reason I did that, in case anybody's interested, is because I didn't think it was ready to be finalized. It's not going to affect anything for this year. Um so I thought we should wait till a, a later date to, to go through it. Cause it's going to need some, more than just tweaks, in my opinion, so. That, that's really all that uh that has happened in the last.
What's strategic plan?
Oh, we did, we, we talked about the strategic plan, which um we're still in the process. We just talked about what we were, what we've done and what the next steps are, and it will happen. The next steps will happen next month. I don't even remember what the what it was. I can find that out. Just a second. Cause I don't.
Late October.
Yeah, late October. Going to the schedule on here. Um. Oh, I'm going to the wrong one, sorry. There we go. Nope, dang it. Yeah, the next steps are in October. Um we've gone through collecting the information and it being put together, and now it was brought back saying, here, this is, we're, we're ready to go on to the next steps. Um so I will, I will bring that back after we've had our next meeting. Very good. All right, well, I'm gonna take a moment and just say um thank you to Commissioner Herb. Uh this is your last meeting, and I will tell you that um you and probably Microsoft Word uh have done more to help Shane with his grammar. I'm teasing. No, thank you so much for, for entertaining uh being on this commission. I think uh, you know, you've brought a, a very helpful and, and um uh special perspective to what we've done here in your tenure. And uh I very much appreciated your time here and uh just uh thank you for, for taking this journey. It's been a lot of fun. And unfortunately, Commissioner Saldivar is not here. Um and uh this would have been his last meeting. Um and we'll be welcoming, I guess, uh if, if the council upholds the decisions of the volunteer recording committee, we'll be bring two new folks forward. I'm not sure who they are, but I, yeah, so um I, I, I know that Commissioner Saldivar sent me a message and said that he wasn't selected, and so that's how I knew it. But I also knew that Commissioner Herb was not uh planning on rerunning, so.
Thank you uh for having me. This has been an incredible learning experience. And I'm humbled and honored to have been on this commission, so I appreciate it very much that I was able to do that.
Did great work. And Angelica, we're happy to have you here. Are you going to come back?
Probably not.
I like her. I like her. I think we're, I think we're going to get along just fine. Um Commissioner Burson is out. Anybody want to take October second? To the council report? Okay, fine, I'll do it. All right. Any other comments, thoughts, statements from Mark's Melissa? Thanks for putting up with us tonight. We're not usually this much fun. Um Shane is, we're not. Um and Senior Attorney Johnson, thanks for a, a very great presentation.
Thank you very much. Was it as enjoyable as last time, Matt?
It's even more. I, I, it's like watching Avengers.
Yeah, it's just like, I was kind of like watching the repeat that you haven't seen for a while.
Uh your Easter eggs are not rotten. Let's just put it that way.
What was that?
Your Easter eggs are not rotten.
Ah, yeah, good, good, good.
It's a movie reference for those of you that don't have lives, or have lives, unlike me. I like to watch movies. All right, we're done. 8:05, we are adjourned. Thank you.